.................................................................................................................................................................................... All right, um, before we approve the consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion that we add under new business item D, we need to appoint an al delegate for Detroit in September. And I will support on that.
Support that.
Any discussion, additional items, anything? Sue.
Councilmember Cantiel?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, with that, I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with that change. It also will have the close session minutes from the July first meeting.
We'll make that motion as well. We do roll call first.
Oh, we probably should do roll call first, Sue.
Councilmember Cantiel?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here.
Now, if there's support to Jim's motion.
I'll support.
Any other changes, Sue, again?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantiel?
Yes.
All right, citizen discussion, item on the agenda.
Gary D. Tim, I reside at 924 Bridge Side Drive. Uh, just tomorrow night is Parks and Rec meeting, and it will, just want to let everybody know, it will be at Creekside Park tomorrow night at six o'clock. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Anybody else? All right, go to old business, item A1, city income tax update, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor, State Council. Uh, just to update you since last meeting, um, with the city income tax, uh, we're working with, um, Mary Ann Sabo to, uh, to start putting a proposal and start developing our communication plan for, um, the sixty days up to the election to get information out on the campaign. Spent a lot of time on that. Also, um, other, um, item I'm working on is I'm working with Dave Austin. Dave Austin has taken the dollar amounts that we have, um, asked, basically from our analysis, after we take out the, the reduction, the deduction of the five mils and the administrative costs, and being able to develop a street plan with that. Um, Dave did kind of ti, kind of put that as a little bit of a back burner with, uh, Rich leaving. He didn't move on for a couple of weeks. I talked to him. He's working on that, and hopefully will have something to assume, um, on that issue. So, uh, that's really what we've been doing since the last meeting. And then, um, we can, if you want, I can go right into the communication.
Yeah, I will do. Go ahead.
Item two. Uh, with the November election looming, the city needs to develop, properly provide information regarding the ballot proposal. The city believes sixty days prior to the election is the critical time to provide information. In order to have an effective informational campaign, I'm going to need assistance in implementing the communication efforts. I've sought out a proposal from Sabo PR. Sabo PR handles our crisis communication through our city attorney, and they are experienced developing these communication plans for other communities. For example, um, in Kent County, for example, they've been successful in valid efforts from the city of Wyoming, the city of East Grand Rapids, and the Kent County dispatch, um, the nine-one-one surcharge, it was for a few years back, they were involved in that. Uh, the proposal will develop media information, develop content, um, update the website for, um, possible, there's also possible digital advertising that can be brought into this, also social media, getting the information out. Um, I've attached a proposal from Sabo PR. Uh, the total cost of the project will not exceed twelve thousand dollars. This does not include a video if we were to choose to develop one. Funds are currently budgeted for this. I should also mention that we cannot legally subsidize any material which can be used as an endorsement for the city income tax. We can only provide educational content, and all material will need to be approved by the city attorney before distribution. Um, we do have a lot of good information. We, um, we got a lot of information from the city of East Lansing. They gave us a lot of information as to how, when they presented their information to their residents, um, about it, and a lot of that information can be very easily used for this. And, uh, Mary Ann's here tonight if you have any questions.
Any questions for me, man? Any other questions for Mike? Look for a motion then to enter into the Sabo PR agreement.
I'll make a motion that we enter into the Sabo, the whole communication plan, not to exceed twelve thousand.
Support.
Any other discussion on it? Sue?
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantiel?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes. Thanks, Mary Ann. Uh, item B, recreational marijuana, Mike.
Yeah, uh, just real quickly, we were, we were planning on providing you a copy of the, um, the first draft of the regulatory ordinance for, uh, recreational marijuana this evening. We also, we're also planning on bringing you the, what's being recommended by the planning commission. Late last week, um, the week of the fourth, um, the state of Michigan did issue their emergency rules. The emergency rules are sixty-five pages long, and some of the rules that are being, um, implemented, uh, don't necessarily interact with things that are in our ordinance, or even in both the recommended planning work, uh, planning ordinance and the, uh, regulatory ordinance. So, um, Jessica Wood, who's working on that, just wanted to make some tweaks to it. Tomorrow, there's a big, um, webinar, um, the Michigan Municipal League is putting out for all communities that are going to be opting in to recreational marijuana, um, and, uh, myself, the police chief, I know Jessica Wood's going to be participating in it, and, um, is going to be able to kind of clarify a lot of the rules that, that are, uh, that are going to be out there. Some of the things that I can tell you, just a lot of the things I'm not surprised about with the rules, a lot of it mimics what they do with medical marijuana. However, one of the things that is of interest to us is, um, they will do some things, like, for example, where you have a special one-day alcohol permit, they're going to do the same thing for marijuana. Um, you can have events with, with recreational marijuana, have these one-day events similar to what you would have, like a, like what we had this weekend with curb walk. Um, also, um, they are also going to be, which we were, I was very pleased to see is they actually are going to be regularly, we've been seeing these smoking rooms and these lounges popping up all over the state. LARA is going to be enforcing, actually, the Michigan Marijuana Agency will be actually taking, um, uh, that, they, that will be a licensing requirement. They will be enforcing those under their auspices. Um, so, um, those things need to obviously be added to our ordinance as well. So, uh, my plan, our plan is, is to come back, um, the second meeting in August. I'm assuming we'll probably have a committee of all, because it's going to take some time going through it. So, uh, I will give you more information probably later in the week as to what we're going to do with that, but that's where we stand right now with the recreational marijuana.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike?
So, what's the process? They come to us with our, our version of the rules, and then we vote on it, and then...
Yeah, well, it'll be, well, we'll do a couple of different things. What we'll do is we'll present it to you, get your feedback on what we've provided you, and then we can make modifications. Sometime after that, I would anticipate a public hearing on the ordinance, and then after that, you're welcome to approve it if you so choose. Or deny.
All right, for that, uh, item C, sidewalks, Mike.
To update the city council regarding the sidewalk effort. I'm disappointed to say this hasn't transpired as planned up to this point. Initially, we itemized last year the east side of the city. However, um, when Rich La Bombard developed the new sidewalk standards, they were supposed to be done to not be very restrictive. We were trying to get the bad, basically, the really bad sidewalks. Um, however, um, when the new sidewalks were, when the, when our inspector went out and marked the sidewalks, um, he was using a previous standard that the previous director had, had him follow, and it, he marked up a lot of areas throughout the east side of the city. That being said, eventually, um, those were to be corrected, and they were going to send letters out to the residents. At the time, um, Rich didn't believe that we had the means to correct the sidewalks. For example, if we did a year later, um, if we didn't, if we, if we did have to actually go out and, 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 and correct things, and then pay for it, and then put liens on property, he didn't believe we had the funds at the time to be able to do that. And so, as a result, the, the letters never went out. Um, and in addition to that, that also, um, a couple of other things happened. We were going to be working on it through the fall, but, um, if you recall, last fall, we lost Jeff Van Siders, um, and we had, have a lot of our staff who was involved, basically, the person that would have been handling our, our sidewalks, he had to be involved more with the sewers because we were short of a body, and, and, and we were also getting Ralph up his feet and on the water distribution end. Um, also, due to, um, an injury by the same sidewalk inspector, he's been out for many months, and he just returned to work. And in addition, um, with Rich leaving, it just, it, we haven't been able to follow through with it. Um, in essence, one, um, we will need to reestablish our sidewalk standard, standards most likely next spring when Dan Zarnacki is more in speed, speedness position. If we receive requests right now to correct sidewalks, I have been waiving fees for the time being. Roger LeWeir has prov, also provided information to the city for those in need to seek assistance. We will share that when the time comes. Also, there was also the issue that we need to address our sidewalks before we address those with residents. This fall, Groundhog Excavating will be pouring sidewalks at parks throughout the city, um, as we receive that grant from the LCTV fund to do so. As for the sidewalk issues downtown, we have two issues of concern. One is over by Shell and Larkins, where Groundhog can just report those in the fall. There's others on the bridge. Um, if you, if you've noticed, the stamped concrete in those areas is sinking in some spots, and I have contacted MDOT to see what can be done, because they, they are responsible for those, and I'm waiting to hear back from them. Also, we've had conversations administratively about this, and we wanted to see what the council thought. Like to entertain the possibility of repealing section nineteen dash eighty-six of the ordinance, which is the inspection of sidewalks, driveway approaches, and retaining walls, sign of sale or transfer of a budding or adjacent property, and issue a certificate of compliance. Basically, when you sell a home, when a house goes up for sale, it went to enforce the ordinance. The police department has never enforced this ordinance, and for our, for administrative standpoint, it's very difficult to track, track sales in the city, and we don't have staff, staff personnel who can adequately monitor this, as our staff has other duties to attain to of higher priority. In addition, um, I'm aware, for example, City of Grand Rapids, they had this ordinance in the past, they've repealed it. Part of it was to this, also, what City of Grand Rapids did was with their, um, with their millage, they also took control of sidewalks. With the millage that they received, they, rather than having putting it on the resident, where our ordinance is solely on the resident, um, they have taken that from, from the resident and are maintaining it. Um, so those are another, those are other reasons why they don't do it anymore. And I know, um, but I know that, um, the realtors in, in Grand Rapids were really not in, not in favor of that, um, way of enforcing the sidewalks. So, wanted to talk to the council, see if they would be, if they would be interested in, in repealing it. It's in the books in the ordinance right now, but like I said, we, we just don't enforce it.
This ordinance was put into effect a year or two ago?
No, this was years ago, right? This is before I came to this ordinance.
We amended it.
I'd actually like to see more than we amended it, though. You amended lots.
That's when we amended it to the year or whatever, right? There you go.
We never amended any ordinances without what we were doing. We've never, I mean, if there was amendment of work, it was before I came here.
We're ready to do this. We did sidewalk planning, so I think.
We did a plan.
We were talking about this and how we were going to enforce it.
Correct. We did that, but we never modified any ordinances or anything. We just came to you with a plan that unfortunately we haven't been able to follow through on.
And we repeal this one, and then we just put another one in place once spring comes and we're, the new policies.
We can do that.
If, if we haven't been enforcing it anyways for a number of years, do we have to take this later for another year, or what's the advantage of taking it off the books?
The fact that you don't, that you have an ordinance in your books that you're not enforcing. I mean, it's better to have one in the book.
A lot of other ones, like riding bikes on sidewalks.
Right.
Draw them all, I'll start over.
Do we leave it in there and then change it in the spring when we develop the new sidewalk plan, and we already have the ordinance, right? We just have to change the wording and the enforcement of the rules?
Yeah, I just question him.
Well, if, if you leave it and somebody makes a formal complaint, then you're going to have to go or address it, correct?
Yes.
By removing it, no complaint, no follow-up harm. Until next year.
Well, we've never, I mean, have you ever even had a complaint on this deal?
Not on the sale or transfer, no. Those are just the ordinance that deals with sales and transfers, right?
Correct. Everything else is, we're going, we're going to keep intact. We're still requiring new construction and to put sidewalk in. That's always been the ordinance that's still enforced.
Well, mine's up to you guys. We can leave it, we can change it. We'll just leave it for now, and then I'll think there. Uh, new business then. Item A is that fire department consultant discussion. So, at the last fire, last two fire authority meetings, actually, there was discussion on bringing in a consultant to show us a discussion on full-time and all this other stuff, and then these proposals came through, and you guys should all have all three of them. And now we're talking about operating guidelines and command structure and all this other stuff, and there's some pretty hefty price tags. So, uh, Gary was taking it to his board at their meeting tonight, and I thought I'd bring it to you guys, um, Thursday, and there's going to be an interview with these three consultants, and I just thought, if you have any ideas, questions, feedback, are we for it, are we against it, is there a better way to spend the money? So, I'll open that discussion up, and I'll take any feedback you guys have.
Not sure your concerns upon that, there?
Um, my concerns are obviously the price tag. Um, I also think a lot of stuff in this proposal is beyond the fire authority's scope as a board. It's much like the council, the only employee we are supposed to have is the fire chief. Um, and a lot of these proposals involve looking at the operating guidelines and whether the command structure is set up and staffing concerns. That is Ron's area, and it's just like with Mike. If his staff has a problem, they come to him. If Ron's staff has a problem, they go to him, and then if something gets messed up, I guess, along the way, then they have to answer to their boards. I, I have a hard time saying, well, we have to figure out a way to pay for a truck in twenty-two, and we have to figure out a way to pay for full-time if that's what we decide we're going to do, and we have to pay for X, Y, and Z, and we don't have money to pay for that, but we have money to pay to this consultant that goes beyond the scope. So, I, I'm having a hard time with it. I don't think it's a good use of money. I don't think the benefits are going to match the price tags, and I also don't want to get into a thing where we're stepping on toes, living beyond our means.
Well, how could you back out of the arrangement now? You just, can you just say, hey, we don't need to hire these consultants?
This is to, the meeting Thursday is just to interview them and ask questions, and then at the next meeting, we'll discuss whether or not we're going to hire them and pay for it. No agreement has been set yet that we need to back out of, but I wanted to get council's feedback before I go up to the fire authority and say, I don't want to speak for all five of you, or all four of you without talking to them.
What's the total amount?
Uh, it ranges from twenty-five to thirty grand, which is on a budget like the fire authorities, a budget like ours, even, is a pretty significant jump.
Right. I think all three entities, both townships and the city, would have, they would vote there, correct?
Yes, yep. There's two for each municipality on that board.
Right. Where, look, the cost of going to the full-time fire department is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Generally, it, the way, the original way it was set up, now that's, they're not, obviously, opposed to changing it. It's not set in a stone way we're going to do it, if we even decide to do it. And if that's all the consultant was going to do is say, let's find more funding sources, let's structure full-time the way that it would be most efficient, I'd be all for that, but I just think this involves way too much other stuff that isn't, you know, I mean, it's a discussion. There's also a state fire board and a state fire marshal, and they set the most of the, this is what you have to do stuff. So, if Ron doesn't run his department properly, then he should have to answer for it, but so far, it's been running like a machine, so, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, also, I mean, part of this is they want to, the way I read the proposal was that they want to do, um, an organizational assessment, basically go review policies and procedures. I gotta think that the Michigan Fire Chiefs Association has an accreditation process where they review their policies.
Yeah, just like they do.
Like, just like the police, and that's not that much money, and you could probably, I, I don't know what the costs are, but if the chiefs of police are doing it for fifteen hundred dollars, I gotta think the fire chief, they're doing something similar.
Well, is it even a need? Because they've kept up on these operating guidelines and procedures, and they're updated regularly, and they change, like the chems protocols and the state orders and the, you know, the training council has their own requirements and...
If they broke?
Why pay thirty grand to fix it?
Well, my concern is, is that it would be spread amongst, it'd be ten thousand, somewhere twenty to thirty are the costs, so we're looking at somewhere seven to ten thousand per municipality or township. We're looking, once we go full-time, we've kind of made a commitment that it's a minimum of, what, five years, certain, certain funding things, I mean, we...
If you get a safer grant, yeah, you have to improve sustainability.
This is a long-term thing if we make this move, so we're looking at spending a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for, say, ten years, that's one point six million dollars. Um, if it turns out that we end up with a union organization campaign, then the cost would probably increase by twenty-five percent on top of that. Since we are the ones that have to vote on whether to implement this, is that correct, the council?
So, implement the consultants or the full-time?
The full-time fire department.
Would it come back to each board?
I don't feel qualified to make that decision based on the information that I have, and I feel that spending a little bit of money, ten thousand dollars on something that's going to cost us one point six to two million dollars over the next ten years is a pretty...
And I'm a hundred percent on board with that. My concern is, if you're going to do an organizational assessment for X amount of dollars, and then you're going to go to full-time, your organization is going to change significantly. So, he's going to come in and look at it the way it's set up right now. And it's the fire department's job to prove they need full-time. It's their job to answer the questions we have. Why are we going to go into their organization and pay someone to tell them how to run it when there's never going to, you know what I mean? There's not a problem the way they run it right now, except obviously being busy and very low. I, I don't know. I, if that's all they were coming in to do, say, you do or don't need full-time, this is how many people you need, this is a funding source for it, this is A, this is B, this is C, I'd be a lot more accepting.
Can we control the scope, or?
And that's what, yeah, and that's the questions that I'm looking together for Thursday. And I'll get them on today, Pasco, and then I'll ask them and then update them. So, I guess I'll just take some of these questions to them, and then I'll bring it back to the next meeting with the answers, and we can see, because we're not going to, Thursday is not when they decide yes or no, we're going to hire. It's just to interview. Then there'll be discussion at the August, one, I don't know, September meeting. The August meeting is canceled because it's the Monday affair, and trying to get it out of that fire station would be a nightmare. So, I mean, we have plenty of time, and I just wanted to bring it to you guys as soon as I got it, for you to know. And then I'm going to meet with Jerry Gale tomorrow, and he's going to give you some feedback from the township board, too, so I can pass that on to you guys.
Are the other, are the other two funding entities flush with cash, or is it...
I don't, I don't know that on camera I can speak intelligently on the funding of the two townships, but, um, I, there's a lot coming up, so I'd like to make sure that we try to look at other options to fund the twenty-twenty-two county truck, and the way the county structure is set up, the only way to do that is to trade places with somebody. But you're only trading for that cycle, so if you trade too far ahead, then your next cycle sneaks right up on you, and then you just, you just don't have the money. And if you miss it, you miss that truck for the entire process. So, the county truck needs to be replaced, so that funding issue is a priority. Right now, they have a UTV that they use for grass fires and events and, uh, all this stuff. That's on a gift program, so in September, they have to give it back. So, they're going to purchase one, so that's another thing. Windows in the building that they need. If they do go to full-time, some of the stuff inside that building is going to have to be changed. There's no, kitchen's not in the best shape, there's no living quarters, there's no beds, there's no... So, I'd like to see feedback from everybody as to what priority we should put these in before we decide if we're not, if we're going to pay for something external. Also, is there better options than these consultants? Is there, if you just want to look at how the board's doing and how we should go as a board forward to discuss and educate on full-time and bring it back to our municipalities, a lot cheaper option is like a Lou Bender type situation. Why don't we just bring Lou in? He can tell you, you know? Because I'm having a hard time swallowing paying someone to tell someone else how to run their department, because they just think you opened yourself up to a whole scope of accountability. I would never come here, and you guys would never come here and tell me, we need to hire a fire this way. It's not our job. If he screws it up, he has to answer, and that's how the fire authority is supposed to be set up, too. I just...
I'm looking for help to help me decide, do we go full-time?
Yes.
That's a, that's a big, big decision with a lot of cost, and, and we're already financially strapped, so...
But that's...
Is it necessary?
That's what I'm, what I'm hearing Mike saying is this, these consultants are doing stuffs we really don't need the answer to at this point.
No, because if you, I, I got ninety percent of this thing read, and I would say eighty percent of what we're already seeing, the information oncoming. I don't see where the twenty percent is where...
I just have, so the authority board consists of the city of all of Virginia's township and all the township?
An elected official and a citizen represent, representative from all three municipalities, six people.
Okay, and my question is, so the, if the authority, let's just say the two townships go, yes, we want that, and the city kind of says, our, the, the city votes kind of say no, and you're, you're four to two, um, are you bound then? Do you have to, you've got to chip in and pay for everything, so it really depends on what the whole group does?
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to meet Jerry tomorrow and get feedback from Tim Wittenbach later in the week. Generally, once the discussions start to happen and everybody gets their point across, it's pretty cooperative. They, it's used, we have a lot of six-zero votes and a lot of five-one votes, but this one is a little different, and it's kind of a huge deal. So, I didn't want to do my vote and Carl Blau's vote and Tim Wittenbach's, so I wanted all the boards to be involved, so both municipalities are taking it, all the proposals to their boards as well.
Yeah, because I don't ever remember seeing a dollar or cent when I went through all this.
That's what we were given, and then, um, we're, you know, we're giving time to interview each one of them, and Jim Hurd, the board chair and the board's attorney, already did phone and video interviews, and asked some questions, um, but they wanted to get questions from each municipality, kind of totaled up, so I said I would bring it to you and make them bring your questions back, and the only benefit to the August meeting being canceled is that if we don't get answers this time, we don't have a meeting creeping up on us. We can go back and get the answers we need, so. up on us. We can go back and get the answers we need. So, I don't, I don't need a recommendation or a motion or anything. I just wanted to keep you guys updated kind of on what we're doing. And I thought these proposals were pretty major and I thought maybe you guys would have some expertise on stuff like that, Jim, especially you, cause I know you do a lot of these proposals, take those for work. So, when in doubt.
I'll agree with what Bernie and Greg said. I think we need some additional information of what that looks like. Cause I, I was under the impression that Virginstown was not in favor of the full-time, when we had the discussion previously, so.
They're not in favor of doing anything. And I think that we're the same, at least Dave Pasquale and I, we're not in favor of doing anything until X lane's your accounted for. I mean, there's a list, Mike put together a list too. There's lists of questions out there. Still about full-time. You know, nobody's looking to prematurely pull a trigger just to get some guys in a building. It needs to be sustainable, it needs to be productive, it needs to be affordable, which probably in our situation isn't feasible for a little while. But I have no issue, like I've said, with anybody coming in and saying, you need full-time like this, you need to pay for it like this, you need to staff it like this. That's fine. Um, but to go into somebody else's house and tell them how to cook is, that's a little much for me. And we haven't had, we haven't had a single issue with the way that department runs outside of being extremely busy. We've never had to call Ron on the carpet for any of his stuff and he's never been calling any of his guys on the carpet. So, we've said it, if they grow.
One comment I've heard is that we do our training on Saturdays. We're one of the few that do. Everybody else trains during the week and that's why we're having trouble finding volunteers. Nobody wants to give up their Saturdays for training. Is that something that could be changed?
Uh, I don't, I, I did the Saturdays for a long time and I would be probably pushed to agree with a lot of people, like it's, but it's part of, from the beginning. It's not something they sneak in on you a year, two years into the job, you know? And the, they had looked at weekday trainings, but again, until there's that uprising of Ron's employees that go to Ron, then he makes that change. We don't have a, a directive to tell him. As long as he keeps up the training requirements through the state and the training requirements for Kent County EMS, we don't really have anyone to say, I mean, his guys will have to come to him and say, I mean, it's his job to recruit. So until that's a problem, it's just not stuff that generally comes to be appropriate. Nowadays, I think, they're for short, I think, for eight on call short, but nowadays, I think that commitment of setting your fork down at dinner and leaving and not knowing when you're gonna come back is enough to deter some people unfortunately. So, um, and then you look at the, what you're asking these guys to do there, barely the middle of July and there are five hundred calls a day. So, well above, we were under five hundred for the year when I started. And it just, it just ran when it ran. But you're asking these guys to do a lot with a little. And uh, you can't bring anybody in and paying any money to get people to stop calling in and whatnot. So, that's not something we can do anything about. But if staffing is gonna help that, then we need to exercise all options to make sure that we're not doing it until four or five of us are off council, we're doing it for a long time. Till a lot of us aren't around anymore, then obviously, I'm not sure if that works. But I'm getting to the age where I might be needing to use nine-on-one, right? So I need to make sure everything runs. But, yeah, that's been an issue. The response requirements for overnight calls has been an issue and, you know, you don't, you really don't know who you're gonna get till, and they're trying to do recruiting efforts. They're not used to just being added in the buyer's guide the Saturday before. Now they're doing other stuff. They have some social media outreach and some referral stuff. So they're making the changes. It's just, not a lot of people anymore. There's a hundred and fifty million ways to serve this community, you know what I mean? With all the stuff that we do. Not a lot of people are looking to get up at three in the morning and put on fifty pounds of gear and stand up in ninety-degree heat. There's just a lot of things. So, we'll get some feedback, I'll get some feedback from Jerry and Tim this week and I'll bring it to you guys in August. And then if you guys think of anything else or questions or highlights or concerns, um, email to anybody now.
Okay.
Anything else for me on that? Mike, it's your turn. Monroe Street Traffic Island, don't do it.
No.
No roundabout.
No roundabout.
So, no?
No.
Roundabout, ever?
While the police department has tried to step up their efforts on enforcing trucks from traveling on Monroe Street, this is a never-ending battle. The fact of the matter is, with one patrol officer on duty for one shift, it's very impossible to enforce when the officer enforces, when the officer can be tied up on other matters. Quite honestly, it's logistically impossible to stop every truck who travels down Monroe when they should be going down Jefferson. Last year, Chief Bukela, Rich, and I were looking in this issue, looking at this issue. We've gone out and walked a few times and we've had a number of discussions about it. And the three of us believe that Traffic Island on Monroe at East Main could resolve the issue of trucks going down Monroe, rather. From our experience, we realize that trucks don't like these, as it's difficult for them to maneuver around and something we might wanna consider. The other issue we see at this intersection is our, we believe that left-hand turns for vehicles going south on Monroe to, to east on Main, making a left going east to Main, we believe that's a very dangerous intersection. I, I look out that intersection daily, cause my office is right there. And I'm surprised there aren't more accidents coming out of there when people make left-hand turns. It's just, I don't believe it's safe. I don't, Police Chief doesn't believe it's safe. And we might be able to deter, but if we put a bump out in, I'm sorry, if we put a Traffic Island in, it would, it would eliminate the left-hand turn at Monroe going east on Main. In the budget this year for the DDA, we did budget a hundred thousand dollars to consider looking at bump outs in that area along with the Traffic Island. And um, before we were to look into this and possibly move forward, we wanted to see if the city council was on board with us looking at this. Also, once Dan arrives, I also believe he'll have opinions on this as well. And I'd obviously like to take his input before we were to move forward or anything. But um, if the city council was receptive to us looking at this in more greater detail, we can do so once he arrives.
Mike?
Yep.
I remember, um, when I was on the DDA, there was some discussion, and I think Williams and Works even showed us a little picture of making just this last block or two block one-way.
Yeah.
And that would allow us to have some angled parking, which would pick us up some more than-
That's an option as well.
Well, I, I just remembered it, cause at the time I thought, that's a cool idea.
I thought it cost less than a hundred thousand too.
Oh, sure it does.
But it does.
Some stripes.
Right.
How would a Traffic Island be configured? Could you explain?
Sure.
Um, you could do it a couple of different ways. But if you put it closer, it would be an median, basically. It's basically a concrete island, basically. It's elevated concrete or asphalt. And it'd be right in the middle of the street. You could put something decorative there if you so choose. Um, you could put, I mean, I've seen islands where they put landscaping and I've seen sculptures. I've seen a number of different things. Um, but it'd be something relatively small that you could put there. But what it would do is, truck, when the trucks see it, they'll go the proper route. They're not gonna wanna drive over that because-
So north of the sidewalk, just back on Monroe Street?
Beyond Monroe, yeah. Right in the, I mean, right over there, yeah. Right in the middle of the street, right? It would, where the left hand, where the car would turn around.
Right, three, four feet wide, just a little-
Something of that nature, yeah.
But wouldn't a bump out like what we got down there by Larkens, that tightens that up? Then we could have angled parking all down through here and that starts that angled parking. Driving one of those big trucks for a living as I do, I can tell you right now, there is, that's the biggest deterrent you're ever gonna find. Cause you just can't, you just can't do it.
And we've discussed even starting a one-way north of the unity property. And that gives them a strip to get out. It also helps these parking lots empty. The school building and the library and the sneakers parking lot. But I, I agree, that left turn needs to be, I mean, we even pulled that extra spot back here to increase visibility. It's still a nightmare.
You hear cars hit their accelerator hard and squat their tires, cause they pull out, pull up and then they make a commitment.
And if it was more than a twenty-five zone, I think you would see a lot of those accidents.
Like deter the trucks coming from Atwood down and coming down into Turnpike.
Just tell them to pull right there that they gotta try to-
Right on a corner.
Yeah. Just like when they tried to turn down Washington.
What is just northbound traffic is the problem?
I got that for a second. Um, yeah, if you one-wheeled it from right here.
High Street.
Yep. Just made this a one-way. Parallel parking or angled parking.
Yeah, angled parking, angled parking, but that's what I think.
Well, I think they suggested it because it would give us more spots.
Yeah.
And at the time, we didn't even, I, this is going back before we even had that parking lot over there done. So we were scrambling for spaces.
Parallel, I think, if you have a one-way turn, is a little bit better, cause angled, you're trying to back up into the one-way traffic. Or parallel, you just, you still be able to go. If you'd have fewer spots, but I, we had a lot of new parking. I don't, I mean, that lot fills up pretty quick concerts and stuff like that, but the majority of the week.
How many accidents do you have on, on Riverside? That's one-way, that's angled parking?
Usually it's on Broadway where somebody backs out of the post office when somebody's delivering mail and they hit somebody at the mailbox. That's been the most common one. I don't think we've had any on Riverside. Hope I can add to that.
Absolutely.
Angle parking only works to deter the trucks if you have cars there. You can have angle parking there all day, but like tonight, there's no cars parked there. And the trucks can still turn down where the island is permanent.
Well, if you're any-
Only one-way.
Angle parking with a bump out, that eliminated that left turn, narrowed it up. There's still, are they gonna wanna come down there?
But you're, you're not talking about a roundabout on twenty-one?
No.
No roundabout.
Nothing, nothing on twenty-one.
No bump out, no.
If you, what, like, at Lark is there, Steve, on the-
Yes, bump, the bump outs.
But you don't need it on both sides. We only need it on the one side. And then you can start your, whether it's parallel parking or whatever. It, it's not enough room to swing a fifty-three footer down there. And we gotta do something because Monroe with the weights that we all carry nowadays, eighty-thousand-pound trucks just destroying that road faster and fast. And we don't have the money to fix it, whether you've seen hot hole patches and that's-
If we did one-way, well, we will do Monroe, but we got three years to that.
But I also think there, this is considerably more foot, bike, kid, skateboard, rollerblade, whatever you wanna scooter traffic than Jefferson, right? I mean, we got, they, that's houses in residential. And I know it's busy and the kids are outside, but this is people walking across the street. And this is bikes and cliff and whoever else walking down through there.
If it was one-way, we wouldn't need a bump out, would we? You mean-
I think, well, if you eliminate the, I think we need to eliminate the left-hand turn and that walk. It's, it's dangerous. Um, but I think if you had a bump out, even the trucks trying to go west out of town, they wouldn't come down here. I think that's the ultimate goal here, is to eliminate them coming down here.
Right.
But even right here trying, if they're coming down and they see that bump out, even the, the turn here is gonna be tight.
Other than truck traffic, how much other traffic is utilized on, on their, on a daily basis that would restrict left-hand turns?
I think the last traffic panel stuff, just under four hundred cars, I'd say, yeah, yay.
Yeah, with employees.
Yeah.
They're lining up, I mean.
So when, when you say left-hand turn, are you also then going to eliminate going straight across? Cause that's basically the same as pulling up there and going straight across. It's basically the same as pretty much the left-hand turn.
And you'd make it a right turn, oh, man. I mean, if you're trying to go straight across, your goal is probably to park and go to these buildings here. So if you're forced to turn right, there's another hurdle right there.
Then you can turn blasting, get into parking lot.
You can still access the backside of these buildings.
I think what you force the people then do is to cut up to the residential area. And it's, it's already quite a bit of traffic up by my house anyways, when you sit out there at night. So is it to please the people at Atwood that are traveling or the whole neighborhood? Cause if you make that one-way and no left turns or no straights, and most people left, how, how you're gonna direct them to Washington or Washington to pay the love in the turn left? Hence, they'll do it, at least it'll be safe. Cause there you got a bunch of stops and yield signs and they don't stop and yield much anyways. It's more of a rolling stop ninety percent of the time.
How many of those on Jefferson are four-way stops, do you know? Or are they all two-way?
Zero.
Are they all four-way?
There's no, no stop signs on Jefferson.
Isn't, isn't that done to encourage the trucks?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You got smooth pavement, no stop signs?
But, but the problem is, I, we asked some of the truckers and they're following their GPS and they're going mistakes and up Monroe. Um, and they're not reading the signs. Some of them do, but most of them are-
And you'll see them come down to Jackson, Pitt North and, and cut through there too. I mean, this happens.
Well, good. We got a lot of options to need probably. Do you think Andy, someone's gonna be giving them?
Brian.
Have Brian come to a meeting and discuss the options and logistics. He's gonna know better than I am what the best option is.
Do we have to give the state's permission to put a bump out?
The bump outs on Main, we will, yes. Anything on Monroe, no.
Would a, would a bump out on Monroe deter trucks?
Could.
Could.
Well, cause I'm just thinking, the state doesn't give us anything that we ask for.
When, when you do ask-
Am I a camera saying that?
When you do like what Mike's talking about, I've seen them, when it gets dark, they'll make the turn and then they get hung out on. And then that's, that's just, that's, that's a nightmare.
Hmm.
Is there plans?
Cause you'll have a trailer stuck out here on M twenty-one and-
To eliminate that pole that Mark was talking about up here that, versus the trucks. I mean, if we go underground, we'll lose that deterrent too, right?
We're gonna leave the pole.
The poles can get in the other one.
We don't have that pole for a long time.
What does it add to that BMW for? Snow removal, maintenance, keeping that street area clear, cleaning that always?
I don't think that's as much of an issue. I mean, you could leave a Bobcat that goes through that area anyway. A Bobcat could easily handle that.
Okay.
I think-
It'd be less to keep it less, to push that snow all into those parking spots.
Cause then the truck's just making the one speed, that turn around and coming back.
All right. So move this bad boy to old business and get you?
Yeah, what, what's Danny's, what's Danny's here? We'll get you. We'll start looking at this and come back to some ideas.
All right. Anything else on that? I don't see Steve amended Mergers four fifty-seven.
All right. Good evening. My issue's a little more cut and dry, yes, no. So, um, in twenty sixteen, the Light and Power Board and then followed by the city council adopted a Mergers four fifty-seven plan for low light and power employees, including your packet, is the original agreement signed by then city manager Dave Pasquale. Since that time, a number of low light and power employees have been inquiring about the Roth deferral option within that plan. Uh, frankly, it's something that I overlooked and we did not check the allow this box. We did, we checked the do not allow this box. So I'm just requesting that the council modify our agreement to allow the Roth deferral option. The city does provide the same plan with the Roth deferral option that we're proposing tonight. And as a reminder, to offer a four fifty-seven plan, there's no cost for the city or low light and power and there are no employer contributions. So we're just recommending amending our agreement as presented in the packet.
So it's been supported by your board right there?
Correct.
All right. And I'll look for a motion then to uncheck the box.
I'll support it.
Any other questions for Steve?
Sue.
Sorry, who seconded?
Heidi.
You did? Council member Yankovich?
Yes.
Council member Chambers?
Yes.
Council member Canfield?